Begin today's policy session of the Phoenix City Council. We don't have a quorum yet. We are waiting for one more, but we can get started with non-agendized items. I appreciate your patience. We had a very long executive session, which is where we get legal advice from our legal team on various legal issues. So we apologize for the late start here today. And I'm going to start, Mr. City Manager, by recognizing two of our great city employees. As you well know and you train our city employees, we ask them to do many things. One of the things we ask them to do is to keep their eyes and ears open when they're out in the community, and if they can help the citizens in ways not directly rated to their job, but to be helpful, we love it when they do that. So we want to recognize two outstanding city employees who did exactly that. I'm going to read this certificate for both Mr. Scott O'Connor and Mr. Andy Correa, and then we'll present them to those outstanding city employees, and we can get maybe as many of the council members that want to get in the shot, because it's a pretty cool story. First, Mr. Scott O'Connor. Mr. Scott O'Connor is a solid waste equipment operator, and we're here to recognize him for his heroic actions on March 6, 2018. Scott has more than 10 years of service at the City of Phoenix. He was driving his garbage truck when he spotted flames erupting from the back of a residential home. He quickly alerted the family inside, ensuring that all could exit the home safely. Scott's willingness to go above and beyond to ensure the safety of Phoenix residents is honorable and commendable. So I have a certificate appreciation for myself and members of the council. Scott, would you please stand to get a round of applause from our council?[115.04][115.04][applause] And I'll come bring the certificate in just a second. The next outstanding employee we want to recognize, Andy Correa. Andy is recognized for his heroic actions, March 14, 2017. He's a solid waste foreman with more than 17 years of service at the City of Phoenix, and he was driving in his Sea of City vehicle when he spotted plumes of black smoke rising above a residential neighborhood. He quickly located the home, alerted the family inside, ensuring that all could exit the home safely. So very similar story. City employees looking out for the best interest of people in the neighborhood. Andy's willingness to go above and beyond to ensure the safety of Phoenix residents is honorable and commendable. And again, I'd like to present this certificate on behalf of myself and the members of the City Council. Andy, would you please stand?[172.12][172.12][applause] You want to be in the photo? Scott had to leave because he indicated his meter was almost running out, and I told him, "As much as we need the revenue." I didn't want him to go extend his time on the meter. All right. I'll now turn it over to members of the City Council. Does any member of the City Council want to make any comments or provide the public any information at this time, knowing that we got started about a half hour late with today's meeting? Mr. City Manager, do you have any ... Councilman Waring, you had something?
Sorry, I do. Let me just put my glasses on here. So we are having another budget hearing. Thanks for everybody who came out for both our aviation meeting, which was well-attended, and kept poor Jim Bennett up, asking questions for almost a couple hours. And then last week, Deb Stark and I did our budget meeting at the Paradise Valley Community Center, but we're going to do one ... My office is going to do one with Thelda Williams, who's out of town on city business right now, but she will be there as well at the community center at 3435 West Pinnacle Peak Road. So it's actually in Thelda's district, but we're going to be there. I don't know which city staffers will come, but it starts at 6:00, and I believe ... Could somebody check this, Ed? But I think at 5:00, we're doing the elections meeting. That's what we did at our other one.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So 5:00, the consolidated elections meeting. 6:00, again, at 3435 West Pinnacle Peak Road on April 17, which is a Tuesday night at 6:00. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from members of this council? All right. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, just we have ... We are halfway through our budget hearings. We have 15 of them. We've done eight. Thank you all for hosting them. This is Tuesday, April 10, so we have two more tomorrow, Wednesday, April 11, and then the remaining five are next week, including the one that Councilman Waring mentioned. So that information is available to the public at phoenix.gov/budget. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman?
So I would like to recognize two students, but first, I would like to recognize Megan McDermott. She was chosen as the overall outstanding graduate student. I am very proud of her receiving that award for 2018 by the ASU College of Public Service and Community Solution. Megan is one of the two graduate student interns from my office who worked on the global market pop-up store, which empowered hard-working women to become self-sufficient entrepreneurs. This effort has put several women on a pathway to furthering their professional development. They have now engaged in street fairs and have come together to figure out their schedules and their weekend schedule on how to become the entrepreneurs that they are within the community. I don't ... I believe that this wouldn't have happened without the great efforts of the two women and the global market. So I am congratulating both of them in doing this. And with her is Alia Almarid, and she was the partner in this venture. And it's so great to see that you're being recognized. So could you please stand up so you can have a round of applause?[487.47][487.47][applause] Thank you. You're going to do great things in our world.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Is there a call for executive session?
Mayor, in accordance with a properly posted notice and agenda, I move that the City Council, pursuant to Arizona Revised Statutes, Section 38-431.02.A, meet an executive session on Tuesday, April 24, 2018, at 12:00 p.m. in the Central Conference Room, 12th floor of the City, Phoenix City Hall, 200 West Washington, Phoenix, Arizona.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Motion to second. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. And now we'll move on to our regular agenda for the policy session. First issue is our 2018 legislative update. So our legislative team is coming forward, led by Deputy City Manager Karen Peters.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. As you know, the legislative session is still underway. We're almost to 100 days, but not quite. And so we are here today to provide you an update and answer any questions we have about bills that are still moving through the process. With me today is Government Relations Director Frank McKeon, as well as his team, and they will lead us through the presentation.
Mayor and council, hello. How are you? We wanted to, as Karen just said, we're going to highlight some bills that are still floating, a lot of activity around them, and just bring them to your attention so that you're aware and remind you of the city's position in them. Just a real quick recap again. The bills we've taken positions on are based upon the four principles: opposing unfunded mandates, preserving local control, protecting shared revenues, and protecting water resources. And now John Wayne, our Manager of State Affairs, will go through the bills that were negatively impacted by.
Mayor and council members, on your City Council report and also in your PowerPoint, there are a number of bills that have already been discussed, already been presented, but given that we are at the back end of the session, and there are a lot of questions from some members as to the status of some of the bills, we thought we'd cover some of the bills that we've brought to you before so that you can get an update as to where they're at. And the first bill I'm going to bring up is House Bill 2126, Government Property Abatement Slum Blight. Initially, this bill was targeting the government property lease excise tax program, which is known as GIPLIT. As introduced, it terminated current redevelopment areas after 10 years of the enactment date of the ... after the bill. It also attempted to redefine slum and blight that's contained in state law. After a very long stakeholder process, we're pleased to report that we came to a compromise on the language. And what the bill now does, very different from what it started, what the bill now does is reduces the central business district from 5% to 2.5% of the city's total land area. It also requires that any expansion of central business needs to be geographically compact. And finally, it requires that municipalities must renew existing downtown slum declarations by October of 2020. These are items that our Community Economic Development Department and Law Department worked hard on to find compromise with the proponents. And with that, a bill that we were opposed to because of a preemption, we are now neutral. So that's good news that we were able to work on that. And a lot of thanks to staff that worked on this issue. Another bill that's on your list to cover is House Bill 2153, Campaign Finance Nonprofits Disclosure. The bill prohibits filing or enforcement officers from requiring any charitable organization under a 501A of the Independent Revenue Code from registering or reporting or disclosing any information about the source of its contribution receipts. Also, it prohibits cities and towns from adopting any laws that would require nonprofit organizations to register as a committee and report. And the latest update is that the bill was signed by the governor on April 5. A bill that's been before you before, but it's taken a different form, Senate Bill 1387, Home-Based Business and Local Regulation. You recall in your past reports that this bill was initially House Bill 2333. That was a bill that failed to advance in the Senate. However, it was revised in the House as a strike everything amendment to this current bill, Senate Bill 1387. As a reminder, staff interprets that the bill would allow the sale of any goods or services in neighborhoods, which would then result in additional noise, traffic in neighborhoods where these businesses would be established. And a great concern also is that secondhand dealers and massage establishments could bypass current public safety oversight and operate in neighborhoods under this bill. Again, we've talked about this bill before. This current bill, this current version, is awaiting Senate Committee of the Whole as we speak.
Mayor?
Councilman?
So any of those home-based businesses, do they have to apply for business licenses from the City of Phoenix?
Mayor and councilperson, again, the way staff interprets the bill, right now zoning and also certain types of activities are regulated by the city, not all, but a lot of it, for public safety and health reasons. Staff reads the bill that we would not be able to do that. And as a reminder, for the mayor and council, we do not have a general business license, so therefore, that's not an issue for us. It's dealing with some of these activities that we currently license, and then other types of businesses that if they bring noise to the neighborhood, if they bring extra traffic. Right now, we believe we have the current tools in place to address complaints by the neighborhood. Staff believes this would severely impact our ability to address those complaints.
So for example, if somebody has ... puts those sandwich signs in front of their house, are we allowed to tell them that they're not allowed to do that, or is that ...
Mayor and councilmembers, and staff can correct me, they're in the audience, but if I understand the question correctly, what would happen is that, again, it's a complaint-driven process. So staff is not proactively driving streets and looking for that type of activity, but if someone in the neighborhood were to complain that there's that kind of activity going on, things like that are going on, then Neighborhood Services would be able to dispatch someone to go talk to that individual and try to work that out, so that all parties can come to some type of good resolution on that topic.
If somebody has a mechanic shop in their backyard, they're allowed to do that now, right?
Mayor and councilmember, again, that's a good question, because a lot of this has come up with the legislature. Again, if there's activity going on that's business-related in a neighborhood and it's not impacting the neighborhood, again, we're complaint-driven. So if the complaint doesn't come into the city, then we're not going to address that. However, if wind complaints come in because of maybe noise at all hours, extra traffic, and things of that nature, when the complaint comes in, then staff can then send Neighborhood Services staff to go out and take a look at what's going on at the activity and try to work with that property owner and the neighbors to come to a good resolution.
Thank you, Joe.
All right.
Another bill on the list that we've talked about before, this is the Digital Good Bill, House Bill 2479. Again, as a reminder, this is a bill that because based on the definition of digital goods and the language, staff believes that it could be very costly, conservative estimate of $10 million initially to the City of Phoenix. We want to report that while the bill has not moved in several weeks, city staff did meet with representatives from the University of Phoenix on Friday. For those who don't know, a lot of this bill was a genesis from the University of Phoenix. We want to report back that the Finance Department had a good conversation with the proponents of the bill, and I believe that the proponents understand our concerns, and I believe we understand their concerns. And it was a good conversation, and we're anticipating that future ... more conversations are going to happen on this topic. But it was good to have a good conversation with them on the ... we can understand one another and maybe keep talking about it when it comes to some resolution. Another bill on your past list is House Bill 2532, Occupation Regulation Municipalities Counties Prohibition. This is a bill that requires the city to renew all of its existing licenses every five years, only being able to adopt them if they are quote-unquote "clear and convincing" for public safety and health purposes. The concern is that the bill is never defined what clear and convincing means, which opens up the bill to interpretation. In addition, private parties can challenge the city's finding, and if they win, we would have to award them attorney's fees. Finally, if the state adopts any regulation whatsoever in a field that we are currently occupying, then our local ordinances would be preempted. The bill passed the Senate yesterday, and now waits a final vote in the House. Another bill that's been in your past list is the Cable Bill, Senate Bill 1140, Video Services Certificates of Authority. The bill initially was reported to you all as House Bill 2579. However, very quickly, the bill, since it failed to pass the Senate, was revived via a strike everything amendment in the House, again, under this current number, Senate Bill 1140. As a reminder, staff is concerned that under this bill, local governments do not retain the authority over the right-of-way. It nullifies existing agreements, no ability to collect on permit fees, no public hearings for the approval of a cable license by municipality, and no ability to ensure that the cable provider complies with the local right-of-way ordinances or licensing agreement. And it's also of note, yesterday in House rules, the House Rules Attorney have opined that this bill has constitutional problems, and that's been shared with members. And so this is, again, a bill that staff continues to oppose, and the bill is now waiting House Committee action of the whole. Another bill that is still moving, House Bill 2604. We covered this not too long ago, Consolidated Elections, Voter Turnout. As a reminder, it requires municipalities to comply with statutory consolidated election dates and hold all elections in the next following even-numbered year. If, beginning with elections held in 2019, an election held at an odd-numbered year other than a special or recall election, the percentage of eligible voters who voted in that election is less than a specified percentage calculated by a formula based on the type of election held. This bill passed the Senate yesterday and was transmitted to the House, and we understand that the bill will probably go, more than likely, go to a conference committee for just some technical amendments before it gets a final vote in both chambers. And then House Bill 2371, this is, again, a passed bill that's been on your report before, Mobile Food Vendor, State Licer. As a reminder, this establishes a statewide license for mobile food vendors. Similar to the Home-Based Business Bill, staff is very concerned that we would not be able to deal with complaints that come from neighborhoods when there are mobile food vendors operating at late hours, creating noise, creating traffic issues, taking up right-of-way. We're very concerned of what kind of this bill would have, the impact it would have, same as home-based business to address complaints that are related to this. This bill did pass the Senate, but it is awaiting a conference committee for technical amendments. And then after that, it would go towards a final read in both chambers. And now I would like to hand it over to Mr. Clark Prinsell, who handles federal, but also a lot of our local transportation issues, on a bill dealing with transportation.
Mayor and council, so this is an update on SB 1147. This is the piece of legislation that would allow the voters of Maricopa County to vote on a 20-year extension of Prop 400, which is the half-cent sales tax that the region currently has implemented. That bill is currently in the waiting for action in the House of the Committee of the Whole, and we are continuing to monitor and support that legislation.
And now finally, the final bill on our report, and this is a bill that's been in your packet before, only for information, but there were a number of elected official retirement plan bills, EORP, what they're known as. Only two measures, or one measure, I should say, did pass the legislature this year, and that is House Bill 2545, EORP, Cost of Living Adjustment. What this bill would do, it would eliminate the current pension increase plan, PBI, which was limited to 4% a year, and it would replace it with a cost of living increase of 2% annually. Now, this bill only takes effect if HCR 2032, which is already passed, is passed in November by the voters. Again, 2545 can't take place unless the voters ratify it in order to protect the benefits of those in the EORP plan. And with that, mayor and councilmembers, that is the end of our presentation. If there are any questions, we'd be more than happy to take any.
Thank you very much. Do you need action on this? No action necessary today? Any questions or comments by members of our council? I would just politely suggest, as we discuss the bill as it relates to transportation and the potential of going out and asking voters across the county to support additional transportation infrastructure projects, that we don't, we do not support initiatives that would minimize flexibility for the City of Phoenix. As you know, we have unique transportation needs, unique transportation opportunities here in the City of Phoenix, and we want those decided by the people of this community and not by the folks at the legislature dictating it. So I think the more that we can get a resolution that allows maximum flexibility for us, for cities in the eastern part of the county, cities for the western part of the county, I think the better off it's going to be, the better off we'll actually get passage when Prop 500 finally goes to the voters. Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much. Great to see you. Good luck. Next item is item number two. Item number two is a discussion of youth re-engagement centers. I think this effort's going to ... this item's going to be led by our Deputy City Manager, Deanna Janovic. Great to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, we're pleased to be here today to discuss the City of Phoenix efforts around re-engagement centers and the collaborative partnership with Opportunity for Youth, ASU, and various community partners. Joining me at the table today is Tim Valencia from the Youth and Education Office, Dr. Kristen Ferguson Colvin, ASU Associate Professor and Director of the Center for Human Capital and Youth Development, Dr. Jonathan Capel, ASU Dean of the College of Public Service and Community Solutions, and finally, Demonte Johnson, Opportunity for Youth Outreach Coordinator. I'll now turn it over to Mr. Valencia to walk through the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. When we talk about opportunity youth, we're actually referring to disconnected youth who are between the ages of 16 and 24, who are neither in school nor working. In 2012, there were 92,000 opportunity youth in metro Phoenix. To put this in perspective, this would actually fill the ASU stadium almost two times. With these 92,000 youth, opportunity youth in mind, each youth potentially costs taxpayers approximately $51,000 per year. This is actually due to an increased use of governmental assistance programs, lost earnings, reduced economic growth, and lower tax revenue for our city. The city began making a difference with the implementation of Re-Engage Phoenix to make an impact on this opportunity youth rate. Based on the magnitude of the problem and the economic impact opportunity youth have on our city, we took the lead in addressing this crisis and was the catalyst for piloting the first model of re-engagement centers with some success. Re-Engage Phoenix is actually located in College Depot, our premier college access program, and targets youth and young adults in educational and career pathway services. For example, within Re-Engage Phoenix, services include GED referral and placement, high school credit recovery, our own college online high school, our trades program, Craft a Profession, and CED is also instrumental in assisting with referrals with our job fairs and our workforce development program for our Re-Engage Phoenix at College Depot. As an example to highlight one of our successes supporting our re-engagement work is our Career Online High School, which actually helps opportunity youth earn a high school diploma. This program actually pairs students with an academic coach to assist in their journey while earning their high school diploma. As you can see from the slide, we have had much success with this program. We actually have had 195 enrolled in this program. We've graduated 70, and almost 80% actually pursue post-secondary education. I'm now going to turn this over to Kristen, who will talk about our ... how Phoenix spearheaded opportunities for youth efforts in developing and leading a group of stakeholders to scale the re-engagement work countywide.
Good afternoon, councilmembers and the mayor. You've just now heard that in 2015, the City of Phoenix had a successful model for a re-engagement center. Also in 2015, the City of Phoenix was participating on a leadership council or advisory board of the Opportunities for Youth Initiative, at the time housed in Meciza, which is a Maricopa County-wide coalition of over 50 public, nonprofit, and for-profit agencies working with opportunity youth. With the successful Phoenix model in mind, the Opportunities for Youth Leadership Council, led at the time by Councilwoman Laura Pastore, thank you for your service, created the quality standards or practice guidelines that enabled the City of Phoenix's model to be replicated across 12 organizations across Maricopa County. These 12 re-engagement centers are currently co-located within existing nonprofit organizations and governmental agencies and collectively offer career, educational, and support services to opportunity youth. Our Opportunities for Youth Re-Engagement Center Action Team is currently chaired by Charlotte Barnett at Arizona Center for Youth Resources, ACYR, and Tim Valencia with the City of Phoenix. I would like to take a moment to recognize our community partners in the audience today for coming together around a common goal to re-engage opportunity youth. Please stand and take a moment to be recognized for the important work that you do.[1731.63][1731.63][applause]
There's a picture.
In order to provide consistent re-engagement services across centers throughout Maricopa County, all centers have agreed to adopt six different criteria. One is that they're currently implementing these quality standards developed by the Opportunities for Youth Leadership Council, which have actually now been recognized as national standards of promising practices by the National League of Cities. The centers also collectively agree to engage 50 new, unduplicated youth per month, per center, so that re-engagement centers are reaching those youth who are truly the most disconnected. They also are reporting results in a shared database across organizations using common metrics, and you know how difficult that is to do. They also refer youth between centers using appropriate ... They also refer youth between centers using a priority referral system that consists of a warm handoff to each youth to a designated service provider waiting for him or her. Organizations also participate in professional development training so that service providers can offer the highest quality services possible to youth. And lastly, they're pursuing additional grant funding together with our coalition in order to bring new services and new staff to our re-engagement centers. As you can see, the original Phoenix model, which has been enhanced and extended by the Opportunities for Youth Initiative, is making a difference. There are many opportunity youth who are now re-engaged in educational pathways and employment. They are also contributing to their local communities. Our work has begun to receive national attention. In 2018, the Measure of America, which has been ranking major metropolitan areas on their rate of opportunity youth since 2012, reported that metro Phoenix improved its rate of opportunity youth from being the worst in the nation at clearly, at near 19% in 2012 to just under 14% today in 2018. We have lowered our Phoenix metropolitan area's rate of opportunity youth. In addition, the report also highlighted the Opportunities for Youth Initiative as a national model of a cross-sectional coalition with a collective vision and broad-based commitment among providers to a common goal, and that, that goal is reducing the rate of opportunity youth.
Mayor, members of the council, we have a short video to highlight one of our very own, Demonte Johnson, who joins us at the table today. At the conclusion of the video, Dr. Capel will speak about the ASU partnership.
Hey, Demonte Johnson. All right, I know what you're thinking. Since you're watching this video, it was like, who is this guy? What is he about to tell me what's about to happen? Stop right there, because the guy that's in this video could easily be you. You see, I've been homeless before, sleeping in a huge gymnasium with my mother on a cot beside me and my brother to the right. I've been in jail before with my big brother on a bunk bed above me. I've been broken and depressed because I've lost a little brother, and I felt like it was all my fault, and there was nothing that I could do about it. I've been defeated and beat down and abused and hurt by this thing we call life far too I fought back. There were times where I needed people in my corner. I looked back, I saw no one, I got hit twice as hard. I fought back, and next thing you know, like, I look back and there's this organization called Opportunities for Youth. Opportunities for Youth was in my, was in my corner, and I never saw it coming. They healed the wounds, the scars, the bumps, the bruises that life can throw at you by providing two key ingredients, two very necessary things to turn, to turn things around, and that's a pathway to employment and a pathway to an educational career, and both of those go hand in hand in life when you want to become successful. Now, me, I know I'm going to be an engineer. Me, currently working because of Opportunities for Youth. I'm worth it. Question is, do you believe that you are?
My name is Jonathan Capel, and I'm a friend of Demontes'. My most important qualification, but I'm here as dean of the College of Public Service and Community Solutions. We are enormously proud to be, to be partners with the city of Phoenix and, as Dr. Ferguson said, a host of organizations from across the county who are committed to making a difference for the future of, for the future of our young people through the Opportunity for Youth Initiative. Mayor Stanton, members of the council, the Opportunity for Youth Initiative represents the city and the county at its best. It brings together a variety of entities, local, county, and state governments, nonprofits, businesses, to focus on the future of the young people of our communities. As you all know, it's not always easy, even when you've got people who share the same goal and want to do good. It's not always easy to get people cooperating, but that's exactly what the Opportunity for Youth Initiative is. I do want to recognize Councilwoman Pastor, who's been a central, central part of this as an officer of the leadership council and providing leadership at a particularly crucial moment when the Opportunity for Youth Initiative transitioned from Mckeesa over to Arizona State University and the College of Public Service and Community Solutions. The re-engagement center effort is a central part of the Opportunity for Youth Initiative, and I want to, I want to really call attention to the work that's been done. As you may know, the Opportunity for Youth Initiative here in Arizona is linked to a broader national focus on this phenomenon of 16 to 24-year-olds who are disengaged, and this is happening across the country. Our work in our community on the re-engagement centers and the ability to create standards and expectations across those centers has been singled out nationally as something that's a model for other communities to emulate, and it's something that we should take a great deal of pride in. Also, within our initiative, we're working on reaching out to more opportunity youth. They are by definition disconnected, so you have to meet them where they are, not where we are, and we're working at getting better at that. We're working at tapping our business community to identify career pathways and help them inform, or have them inform us what our young people need to do to be prepared for employment, and we're working to establish educational pathways. As Demonte said, it has to be not just about a job, but it has to be about education as well. Demonte's part of a team. I want to recognize the rest of our Opportunity for Youth team. You all stand up so we can... Yeah, go. All right. And let me say that the Opportunity for Youth work is a perfect, perfect complement to our college. I will not take advantage of the microphone to filibuster. Many of you are familiar with our work, but we're committed to making a difference in the community and see the university as a natural partner in doing so. We already heard about two of our fabulous social work students who are working with refugees, heard the mayor talk about Starfish Place, which is working on human trafficking. Our Public Allies program is creating pathways and opportunities for young people. Our Bridging Success Program focuses on former foster youth and changing their fortunes. I could go on and on and on. What we are is a partner that is committed to working with all of you to solve the most difficult problems we face in our, in our city, in our community, and I want to reiterate at this, this time, our openness to, to your partnership and anything we can do to be helpful. Last, last thought, which is that the, the issue of opportunity youth is one that resonates very deeply with ASU's mission of access and inclusion. What President Crowe has articulated is that ASU sees our purpose as not leaving people behind, and that you have to measure the success of an institution of higher education by who you include and how they succeed, and if you fail to do so, what you leave is massive amounts of human capital untapped. That's essentially the same challenge that we face with opportunity youth. We have bright, young people who can contribute so much, not just tax revenue, that's important too, but can contribute so much in terms of their energy, their entrepreneurship, and their spirit, and if we don't figure out a way to tap into that, it's our loss. And so, this is very much on par with the ASU mission and why we have 100,000 students and a population that looks like the population of Arizona. Certainly, our college is representative of this, 7,000 students, the majority of whom have never had a member of their family graduate from college. It shows what is possible. And so, thank you, all of you, for your support for the re-engagement center work and for being a part of the Opportunity for Youth Initiative. Mayor Stanton was one of the, one of the architects of this work and one of the principal movers to make this happen in partnership with Don Covey at Mckeesa and continues to support it, and we are enormously grateful and see, see great things for this project moving forward. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, that concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Outstanding presentation, great news, and congratulations on all the success. I'll now turn it over to members of the council. I do want to add my professional staff member, Laura Diaz, who helped begin this program when she was at Mckeesa, and I'm lucky enough to have her as my education advisor. She teaches half the day and then comes, works in the mayor's office half the day, fully committed to education. Thank you, Laura, for all your great work. Now, I'll turn it over to members of the council, comments or questions? This is not an action item, right? We're just getting an update on this very, very successful program. Councilwoman.
First of all, I want to thank Tim for being the architect of the re-engagement centers and the whole team, Charlotte, and the whole team of coming together and really looking at what was needed in re-engagement centers and what type of data we really needed to have in order to move forward. So I believe your work is now being represented nationally, so I want to thank the team and the committee for doing that, because it was all volunteer. Secondly, this isn't really about me. I just happen to be with a great group of people that led this, and so I, I like to thank them. And it's really about the youth for me. I would not be sitting here without the youth, because the youth helped me get elected. And I like to feel like I represent the youth because you lead me, and you lead me in many different ways of my life that you don't even know how you touch me. So I want to thank you guys for leading, because it's really going to be you that makes the change. I sit up here with very privileged backgrounds, and sometimes privileged backgrounds don't understand the needs of the youth and don't understand the struggles of the youth and what they face today. I was very fortunate to come from a privileged background. However, I had family members that weren't. So I truly know what it means to have a work ethic, to pick yourself up when you fail and you fall, and to continue to have hope and faith. This is what this effort really means. This is about hope and faith of our future. So everybody that has been involved in this, starting with Don Covey, he's not here with us today, because he's really the one who, who brought it to the attention, to Maricopa County and to the city, Mayor Stanton, for really bringing the collective together, because the collective has now been seeded and it is now growing. What I have to end with is just remember to register to vote, because it's very important in these times, and continue with your great work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Any other comments? Councilwoman Gonzalez, please.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Thank you for the, for the video and for everyone who stood up. Thanks for leading by example, an opportunity to, to meet many of you, spend a little time with you, and thank you for being so open with, with sharing your, your story and wanting to, to make it a better community for the next generation. There are a lot of parallels. I'm taking notes as I usually do in a meeting, and the video pops up, and listening to your story is pretty moving, and it's, it's very, it's, it's far, we have, there's some parallels there. I know what it's like, I attended 13 public schools growing up. I also know what it's like to be a homeless kid, part of my life with my, with my family. A lot of things that you're talking about, it, it catches you off guard, but it's a reminder to me, and it probably is a reminder to you every time you share the story, how common that story really is. And we are very fortunate, because there are a lot of people who have slipped through the cracks, and you know what it's like to either catch up or keep up your whole life, right?
Constant fight.
It's constant, but, but doing something about it and leading by example, and it's important that people see you in such a leadership role where they know that they too can, can succeed. I, I look at all of these organizations here that made this possible, and I, you know, Arizona Coliseum allowed me to work at the age of 13, which allowed me to buy school clothes for my brother and me and help my mom. Organizations like CPLC and Jewish Family Services and so on, ASU, which is obviously entrenched in our community and in our city and our state and type of leadership, the city staff that we have, starting with the staff that, that we have here with us, and Tim Valencia, who works closely with all of our schools and the students, and of course, leadership of Deanna Janovic, just one of the greatest doers in our community, in our And then it's also someone like Laura Pastor, the, the people that I, and Laura, we're, we're similar in, in age, so I'm not calling Laura old when I say this. Laura's like a sister to me, but, but it was meeting with people like Laura Pastor. Every time I would walk into one of these organizations, someone who's seen something in me, who didn't allow myself to let myself down, and, and so, you know, that, that goes a long way, obviously. So I love that we live in a city that values everyone, that sees the potential in everyone, in every kid, and, and we remind every kid, it's going to take every one of us, it's going to take you and me and every one of us, the person sitting to your right and your left, to move this entire community forward, to move this city forward. It depends on your leadership. You have no choice but to succeed, and we know that. The people around you know that, and that's why we're banding together, working together, and, and you deserve the, the very best. So thank you for, for your leadership, young man, Demonte. Dr. Capel, thank you for everything, Ms. Culvin, and just everyone up here. But, but again, I, you know, I'm glad to hear the mayor acknowledge his city staff. He's always done very well in, in doing that. But Elora, who is an educator in, in District 5...
5? I'll take over 5, too.
Sorry?
I'll take over 5.
Are you in 4 or 5, Alora?
4.
4 with kids in 5. How about that?
Yeah, that's true.
We would all do well by seeing Alora be a school board member in this community soon and beyond, but, but those, Alora, you got to appreciate educators in public office. So, so anyway, it's entrenched in our community and our city staff, so, you know, I'm excited for programs like this, and thank you, sir, for leading the way, helping lead the way.
My pleasure.
We got to thank Felix, and I'll tell you the story of Felix. Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's hear a Felix story.
Felix started, or I was introduced to Felix through Elora, and I would always hear about the name Felix, and we were in the mid, middle of trying to hire people, but like normal, there's bureaucracy, and there's red tape, and poor Felix was left kind of floundering for a little bit, and CPLC picked up Felix. We were very fortunate for that because he was floundering, and we had, we had basically promised him a job in, in the community, and because of bureaucracy, fingerprints, and all this other stuff that I was trying to work through, he needed to get working, and so CPLC picked him up. I'm glad to know that he's with us, and so Felix has truly been in the trenches of, at the beginning of Opportunities for Youth, and he has been successful throughout this process, so just wanted to recognize you, Felix.
Any additional comments by members of this council? Outstanding work by everyone. Can't wait to hear future reports on continued success. And with that, I think there's no other business for the city council. Our meeting is... Oh, Dr. Capel, I apologize.
Quick word.
Please.
Under the gavel, well, after the gavel. So I just wanted to say a word about Felix, since Councilwoman Pastor did. So she talks about red tape. I checked with Felix if it's okay. The red tape is that Felix has a criminal record, and I want to make this point because I think it's a critical thing. We have a major challenge in our country, which is it's very hard for people who have been in the criminal justice system, even without a conviction, but if you have some sort of conviction, very hard to get employed, and this is something that we collectively have to address. I'm proud that one of the benefits of moving to ASU is that we were able to hire Felix as part of the Opportunity for Youth Initiative, because we worked through the issue of criminal background, and he's made a point of straightening out his life and uses his own experience to be incredibly effective reaching out to young people.
to be incredibly effective reaching out to young people. And so I just want to take the opportunity to call that out. It's one of the, one of the big things that we have to deal with, and it's a major issue among the Opportunity for Youth population, so something for everybody to, everybody to be aware of. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Capel. A point.
All right, with that, Dr. Capel, we have, because of budget cuts, we can't afford a gavel anymore, so it's my fist. So our meeting is adjourned.